I don't care about laughing. He'll get the name and he'll be leaving.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a special meeting in lieu of our second regular meeting of this month. So I will open the special meeting in lieu of the regular meeting with a salute to the flag.
My pleasure. The United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Town clerk, would you kindly read the roll?
Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor McGeeris.
Here.
Counselor Durfee.
Here.
Counselor Carroll.
Here.
Counselor Costa.
Here.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
All present.
And in lieu of the fact that we do not have a consent agenda this evening, Mr. Bowlin is being deprived of prime time. So we will go right to the business at hand. And the first item is, as we sit as the Board of Licensing Commissioners, there is a request. This was a matter continued from our prior meeting. Bay Street Properties, the Seabreeze Restaurant, has requested permission to remain open until 2:00. We referred that to the Police Department. We received a letter from the Acting Chief and saying that they had no problem at all. They would monitor the situation. So...
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve that request and we do that with an additional fee of $100.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
May I make an amendment to that motion, Madam President? I would make a motion that the $200 we're going to charge for the extra hour be returned if the Police Department has no problem with the opening for one additional hour.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none. We will move to the first motion. All those in favor of the first motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries. Those opposed? One abstention?
Opposed, Dan.
Okay. Six with one abstention. We also have before us -- that will end our sitting as the Board of Licensing Commissioners. We will now move to appointments and resignations. And lo and behold, the first resignation is by John G. Edwards from the zoning board.
As you're well aware, Madam President, Counselor Edwards cannot hold both positions. So we request that you accept his resignation. Or, as we put it, he automatically resigned when he took this other position.
Okay. He's going to miss the monthly meetings. Mr., I want to entertain a motion that we accept.
Make a motion to accept with regret. Second. And thank Mr. Edwards for his many years of service to the zoning board.
Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Seconded by Mr. Costa. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Yes. Six with one abstention. Note duly noted.
Madam President, just for the record, we are advertising these positions on the website. We've had to change the date, which was originally actually proposed by me, which was December 31st, since that is a Sunday, and on Monday we're closed. We changed the date, unless we hear different, to December 29th, which is Friday.
You know, I do have a concern about that date because people are not thinking, I think, about town appointments during this period of time.
I would think they'd be thinking about town all the time, Madam President.
Well, unfortunately, that is not the case. I would like to see it extended at least a couple of weeks.
I think the next date would probably be without my calendar in front of me. I think it's Friday, December 13th. Oh, that's a lucky date.
Even the second meeting in January seems -- I mean, as people get geared back into thinking about...
Well, we need to have them in -- Friday we'd be January as well. We need to have them in with enough time so that they can be put in place into your agenda. If we got them to Friday before the meeting, we would not have that information for your agenda package. So December 12th would probably -- I mean, excuse me, January 12th would probably work because I believe you have a council meeting on the 22nd.
Correct.
And that would give us time to get the information together for you.
Good. All right.
Can we have a motion as such, please?
Motion to extend the date for applications of laws and commissions to the open appointments to Friday, January 12th. Is that what you want?
At 4:00 P.M.
At 4:00 P.M.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
As far as the vacancy on the zoning board of appeals, I believe that automatically goes to the alternate. So the position open is an alternate?
Yes, second alternate position.
Yeah. So that is, yeah.
And that is what is being advertised.
Okay.
We can open that hurdle magically. Now, we have some unfinished business and new business. We have, first on the agenda is the appointment of the town planner. You want to proceed with that?
I don't know whether it should be the appointment or the announcement of the choice of town planner than your choice of contract. This is the first time I have actually dealt with this because you don't appoint him until you approve his contracts. We may have this slightly out of order. As you're well aware, last year we had budgeted, starting in November, for the hiring of the town's first-time, full-time town planner, moving away from using consultants at the same time, providing a resource to the everyday functions of the town and to the number of people coming in and asking planning-type requests that would assist the office. We advertise in a number of publications, including the American Planning Association website. And after going through three interviews, and as I indicated, I requested that all of you have the opportunity to sit on one of the interviews. A couple of you were able to take advantage of that. I am recommending for your consideration for hiring tonight Christopher Spencer. He is a resident of Bristol, Rhode Island. He comes very highly recommended. In fact, I gave you -- you got in your mailbox the other day, a local residence, a comment from Mr. -- and I'm not going to...
Sticor.
Sticor, who's a Tiberton Land Trust, and his high praise for the hiring of Mr. Spencer. You have your contract in front of you. I don't know whether you have any questions in relation to the contract. Mr. Spencer is a graduate of MIT in city planning with a certificate in urban design. And I think that anybody who sat in on the interview process found him extremely articulate with the capability of explaining to the layperson concept and design and getting those points across. And I think Mr. Spencer would be a wonderful addition to the town staff.
So a motion would be, I think, appropriate to ratify the appointment subject to the contract.
Motion to ratify subject to...
Ratify the appointment subject to the ratification.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
If I could, I just want to say, with this process, I've expressed in the past a concern with the process. And I've consistently voted against, not based on the candidates, but just based on the process. I am going to support this appointment, or ratifying this appointment, in part because the administrator did allow us to at least get that much information to see the three finalists, to be able to sit in on the interviews, to at least have enough information to feel confident in his appointment. I still have -- I do it with reservations. I still have concerns that the council is the elected representatives and people don't have all the information on the process, on the candidates, on the pool of candidates to make -- to be really confident in making that decision. But I'm going to support this with those reservations and give the benefit of the doubt because we don't want to end up in a stalemate situation. We do need this position, and it is a very good candidate, so I am supporting it.
Motion has been made. Any further comments? You're not going to get soft on this one. All those in favor of the appointment, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries. Did I count correctly on that one?
Yes.
I did. Okay, thank you very much. We will now move to the ratification of the contract for the planner. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to ratify the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr.?
Item 14 on the contract. May I ask why we're supplying the planner with a cellular phone to be used primarily to conduct municipal business?
If he is out on the street doing and going out and looking at sites, it'll allow him to be at least in contact with Town Hall because this is an office that is primarily going to be manned by himself, even though Kate Mashogue will be assisting him. But Kate will be out on family medical leave for about three months to six months. So this at least allows him to be able to be in communication with his office and for me to be able to hunt him down, too, if I need to get ahold of him. Now, I will probably be giving him the option with your approval for further discussions. As well, many of you are well aware, our cell service provider is pretty poor. And in fact, where I'm supposed to have a cell phone, I use my own personal cell phone. So we may talk to you about allowing us to compensate him for some of his cell phone service as a flat fee. But I think it's important that he have a cell phone available.
Let me continue with my questions on that particular point. I expected the explanation would be one where it facilitates communication with the planner. However, there is a negative side to the providing of him with a phone as well. It indicates to me, let me say, excessive control. An excessive control used to manage an employee, especially the department head, has a tendency to destroy morale and affect his efficiency and his effectiveness. Unless you see no possibility of a new planner feeling that he's being overly controlled, then I would have no objection. But on the face of it, I would suggest, you know, that that paragraph be eliminated from the contract.
Well, I want to assure you, it's not my intention to control the new planner, but I will say to you that in today's world that we operate in, that I have found, whether I like it or not, people want instantaneously to be able to get ahold of people, including myself. And a number of people have my cell phones so they can call me whenever they so desire, whether it's after hours or even on weekends, and I try to make myself available. And I think that a number of our department heads try to do the same thing, that if they're not in the office, that people can get ahold of them whenever they need to.
Do all the department heads have cell phones?
I know a lot of them do. I can't say which ones do not. I would imagine the only ones that would not have one that is with town equipment that I know of is the tax collector. But I know if you look at the fire chief, the police chief, code enforcement officer, the DPW director, the town administrator, most of us are all carrying cell phones.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the table that has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, then, of the motion? Raise your right hand, please. Those opposed? Now, we now move to the presentation of the budget.
Madam Chairman, we unfortunately had a problem with PowerPoints, so what I have done is printed you out the presentation, so I'd like to walk you through it. I think it's important, as I like to say, to state, whenever I talk about budgets, is that a budget is a living and breathing document. It is not something that typically is cut into stone. It is the opportunity for the town and the town staff to look forward into the next budget year and say, this is what we believe we will need to operate the cost of doing business in the town. Now, the budget has a different look to it this year. I was planning on a more radical remake, but I decided I didn't think I needed the grief because we've always been doing things this way. I was going to remove account numbers so that we could get more information in and relay the pages out. We are also going to be putting some revenue numbers in. Some of that has been accomplished in the editorial copy so that people have a better understanding of what is going on in each department. It is also broken down into nine sections. We tried to group information together. You know, this design is a work in progress, and I would imagine by next year there may be eight sections or seven sections. For instance, we have talked about administration, financial administration, legal and court expenses, planning and community development, public safety, Department of Public Works, boards and commissions, and social services, which we provide through some vendors who provide local social services, and obviously the senior center, which we operate. And we also have capital expenses. As I said, each one of these nine sections provides some explanation of what services are required and what revenue is generated by a particular department. In addition, the number of personnel in each line item is reflected. Full-time obviously means full-time positions, part-time means part-time positions. For example, picking on a town clerk's office, you'll notice there's a full-time town clerk, and she has full-time four, full-time support personnel. The budget's reflected what has been spent historically and developed as far to zero-based budgeting. We tried to get to department heads, which are very cooperative and working to make this a better budget. Some hard numbers. Large amounts of the budget reflect, you know, contracted services, and almost 66% to 70%, which will be higher if we reduce the budget, reflects personnel costs at this time. Four new positions were proposed. Two positions are under discussion, one new code enforcement officer and a full-time fire marshal. And I say are under discussion because nothing is finalized. Last year's financial town meeting appropriation was $12,368,663,000. This year's department requests were $15,84,254, a 22% recommended increase over the approved financial town meeting from last year. At this time, the budget amount, as I'm proposing, has been recommended to decrease to $13,654,582, but this is still a 10.4% increase. Last year, as you may recall, when I first came here, we were still at a 15% difference. Large budget items, those final amounts that are still in doubt, are health care, liability insurance, workman's comp, the police pension payment. We're waiting for our actuarial recommendations and a non-settle police contract. And we have also the trash hauler contract, which I know will be coming to you in early January for hopefully approval. Other issues for discussion, cost share with the school department for the school resource officer. That grant expires come this August, and there needs to be some discussion on how we are going to cost share that position with the school department. I would say that'd be appropriate discussion when we, hopefully, when you meet the school department in January. Street paving funds. Last year, we reduced our street paving funds from $300,000 recommended by the department head to $125,000. He recommended $400,000, I believe it was, off the top of my head, and we're at $250,000. Obviously, you know, we have a lot of roads that need to be paved. Some communities have chosen to go bonding to paved streets. I'm not a big fan of that personally. And obviously additions to personnel. Last year, budget discussions were holding the line at 5.5% increase or less. That was the battle cry, as we all remember. This year, employee costs were held in general to about 4%. That was the direction that you gave Mr. Souza, which I have followed through to try to hold our employee costs on average to 4%. That changes each year by whatever the contract is, but on average over the three-year, the contracts have been roughly 12%. Energy costs have fluctuated as much as 30% over the last year, seem to be rising again very rapidly. Paving last year was reduced, as I mentioned, by 59%. And our DPW fleet, as some people would tell you, is at almost an antique status. And the questions that are facing all of us, and I believe it is a joint discussion. One of the things that I find troubling in these discussions, it somehow seems it's the school department, the town administrator, town council, and budget, all on different fields, where we should be really on one field, looking at revenue streams and looking at how we can work together to accomplish the needs. And I guess the questions go, where do we go from here? Do we continue to reduce maintenance, or do we push future costs onto future councils? And I think that's the challenge that is facing many of the communities in Rhode Island because we're not seeing large increases in revenues from the state government, yet we're seeing, as we all like to say, the unfunded mandates from state government. But I do believe that at your direction, that we have been trying to get our costs under control, but we are being pressured by other sharply increasing costs from other areas. You'll see a budget message when you open up the budget itself on the first two pages. Now, and I would like to say, the staff also recognizes the need to control spending with the bond clause and new schools beginning to come due this year. Over the next few months, there will be proposed increases in fees to limit the increase in property taxes. The goal here is to limit the basic service cost increases to the resident. And that'll be a discussion, I think, that also needs to be had, is what services do you get covered by property taxes, and what services do you pay if you want those services through fees? When you go to the budget, you'll see, as we have broken it down, there is some copy on their administration. Planning and community development, which combines the planning and zoning, planning department and zoning board review under one topic area. Obviously, this year, we are also reflecting the increase of having a full-time planner in place for the entire budget year. But it's also anticipated that fees paid for permits, inspections, and plan reviews will generate at least $257,000 in revenue. Under courts and legal expenses, obviously, this is an issue that you're well aware of that we've talked about recently. Our municipal courts cover their cost, and actually, they cover bringing in about $60,000, yet cost us about $36,500. We also have increases in the needs for legal services. And I'm going to be requesting an additional $10,000 in labor council to help us update our personnel plan, our personnel policy, which was last reviewed nine years ago. Financial administration reflects the officer, the treasurer, tax collection office, and tax assessment office, the tax sale, the audit of town services, and the budget committee expenses. I will tell you, there is at least, I was appreciative of the treasurer. There is two financial typos in the treasurer's office, which will be corrected. Treasurer called me or notified me over the weekend while I was away and, you know, to make sure we picked that up. Personnel and retirement costs, health insurance is anywhere, we're looking at anywhere between an 8% and 10% cost increase in health care. The problem is, we've had so far a terrible year in our experience rating, but that may improve when they put their final numbers on it. But that's certainly a number that is a number that could change as a volatile number. But I think it's important that, two years ago, employees were paying $84,000 in co-share expenses. They are now up to $178,000 in co-share expenses. Plus, they have also seen their co-pays increase at the doctor's offices as each contract changes. And as we look at substantial retirement costs, the employees also will contribute $440,000 to help cover their retirement costs. Now, a new cost this year to us is the public works pension. We have not been having to make a contribution over the last couple of years, but this year we will have to make a contribution, which is about 2.55%. Public safety. We are targeting, hopefully, that fire rescue reimbursements can increase up to maybe as high as $290,000. It is recommended that the fire department's, fire department chief secretary's hours be increased to give her more time for collections and possibly some new software. Police department revenues are in the range of about $121,000. Some discussion is about hiring a full-time fire marshal. I know that we get a number of comments here at Town Hall that people want inspections and want them now, or they have to go to settlement, and one of the problems of having a part-time fire marshal is trying to meet the needs of the residents and even developers, builders on projects they have. We will actually propose spending next year on public safety in the neighborhood of $4.8 million, which is roughly a 9% increase over last year. A lot of that, again, is costs not related to salaries. We also found a mistake in last year's budget material that was originally submitted of $70,000, which has also contributed to the problem. Public works, which is the next section, they bore the brunt of last year's budget cuts, as you may recall. And in fact, it was requested that they increase the number of full-time employees by two additional employees, and it was very hard to recommend that that increase not be taken place. Also, we're anticipating, at this particular point in time when the budget was being drafted, a 25% increase in contract costs for residential curbside rubbish and recyclable collection from two years ago. Because, as you may recall, we've increased the number of clients that we were picking up, customers we were picking up by some decisions that were made. Now, we did get some good news here, which I'm going to let Mr. Webster tell you about in a couple of weeks, is that our numbers, initial bid openings came back more favorably than we had anticipated. But that'll be a separate report that'll be made to you in January. But I'll give you an example. Last year, because of budget constraints, this department shouldered the brunt of budget cuts, paving counts reduced by two-thirds, so no budget cut in half. This year, these cuts have been partially reserved, but not to the optimal amounts necessary. And the increased cost of salt, sand, and gravel has resulted in a request of 25% increase in recommended expenditures. We're looking at potentially spending as high as $2.677 million on public works. And then the last section is boards, commissions, and social services. Social services, which is our various, includes Eastern Rhode Island Cooperative Extension Service, Newport County Mental Health, the Visiting Nurses, Little Compton Nursing Association, New Visions of Newport County Self-Health. These are outside vending corporations, provide services to our local residents. And obviously, we operate a five-day-a-week senior cert. And obviously, we operate a five-day-a-week senior citizen center, and anybody who's been up there has only heard positive comments to the level of senior services that we are providing, including bus service. Also in here is our recreation and parks. And then the last section of the budget is capital expenses. Department of Public Works is proposing a new bulldozer for the landfill to be purchased over, it should be five years instead of seven years in the type, with an annual payment of $50,000. A truck lift that allows the town to maintain some of our larger pieces of equipment without outsourcing this work. It also creates a safe work environment for our mechanic. And I will emphasize here, this will not eliminate all outsourcing of work, but it will allow him to maybe handle some jobs he can't handle right now because of safety-related issues. A new snow plow frame and sander for one of the three trucks not equipped for winter activities, the purchase of a replacement of the small dump truck with plow and sander. In the maintenance division, a new 3/4-ton utility pickup is proposed for purchase with payments of two years. The town currently contracts with the town employee to use his own vehicle. A new trailer is also being proposed to replace a handmade trailer the town owns. Now, if we continue to do this, to let the employee use his own truck, we're going to have to change how we are compensating him for gas usage. We are technically in violation of some federal regulations of allowing him to use, how we allow him to tank up his gas, since we purchase our gas as a, we don't pay certain taxes on them in relation to federal regulations. So they're only supposed to be used for vehicles that we can guarantee are in municipal use. The fire department is requesting a new fire rescue vehicle. You heard our discussions the other day. It's a seven-year-old vehicle beginning to suffer significant maintenance expense. A quint fire truck was removed from the recommended request, also an air handling system in light of the fact that we're looking at where we will maybe rebuilding fire stations or relocating fire stations to change our population of residents. The police department has requested three cars. At this time, I'm recommending two new cars. Under the town administrator's office, I'm also recommending air conditioning town hall to create a better work environment for the town hall employees. I also believe it will reduce energy costs by eliminating all the noisy, non-energy-efficient window units, plus the cost of replacing them. And monies are being proposed to create a match for the proposed grant request to DEM to modernize Wolver Marsh Park. With that, that gives you a summation of where we are. Obviously, I don't expect questions tonight, but I would like for us to schedule as soon as possible after the first of the year, some discussions, or maybe some additional changes that I have with this. We have bound them this way, so it's easier to give you the ability to exchange pages in and out, or to throw the whole thing out, and we give you a new three punch copy. Future copies will have the dates, so that you can keep track of the pages.
Very good. Since we are looking at it for the first time, I agree that I think we should schedule a time after the first of the year where we can review our questions. And we probably should do that now, so it won't slip. Does everybody have their calendars out?
I'd also encourage you, if any of you do have questions beforehand, please feel free to give me a call at any time.
One thing, as we get to the financing and the bond issues, the new bond schedules, or the amortization schedules that tie into these numbers, Jim?
Yes.
If you could get those to the council, that would be super duper.
Yes.
Because that's a big item, just the amortization schedules.
You may have them, but I can make copies at the end.
Can I interrupt the treasurer just for one second? On page 20, at the very end, towards the very end of this document, there are some debt service numbers. None of this is reflected in the budget right now. Whether it's monies accounted for last year or appropriated, this debt service is not incorporated into the numbers on your budget. These are some numbers that were appropriated last year in the budget, what has been so far recommended, and some documents that the treasurer has given me. And as you notice, those numbers have not changed from the recommended. But we have not incorporated that into the municipal budget, because it was pretty much the understanding last year that we were going to hold that off as an aside with the budget committee.
James Amorante, Town Treasurer. The three current debt services we have, which are fixed, and the debt service payments defined, are the so-called industrial bond. And by the way, as you probably know, this coming fiscal year will be the last year for that payment. $324,825 plus 500 for the paying agent will be $325,325. The second debt service is the new Rybeck bond for the high school renovations. That debt service for fiscal '08 is $353,200. Again, as Glenn said, and as we've discussed with both you, Madam President, and Glenn, that number is fixed. And finally, the debt service for Starwood Village at Mount Hope Bay, if you prefer, which is $826,544.
$544.
And the last number, again, is both the bond anticipation note for the elementary school project, which currently I show is $355,000. And again, as Glenn has mentioned, and as I've mentioned to you, may change, as well as the $955,000 for the $12 million bond for the new elementary school. And I think those numbers, if anything, will go down. That's what we're working towards. But with regards to your question, I'll be glad to give you the schedules for the first three.
Not so much, Jim. It's the last, even the, it's really the last two. I don't want the, because I know the industrial bond issue will be paid off in '08. But as we develop, or as you develop the amortization schedules, and let me just tell you, just one concern that I have, is that if a principal payment on the $12 million bond, not the ban, but the bond...
Yes.
Could be placed in the year following '08, or six months '08, when we pay off the industrial bond, it would sort of be helpful for the overall finances of the town. And that's just an issue that we'll probably wrestle with as time goes along.
Yeah.
If we could, am I making myself clear? If we could defer the principal payment, not have it come in '07, '08, but have it come July 1st of '08 or '09, when we paid off that $325,325, it would help.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about it, because the $12 million bond anticipation, though, just for the new elementary school matures in August of this year.
Right.
Now, if this new elementary school is completed, and we have to adhere to Rybeck's financing schedule, their pool bond goes out in May, then we may very well have to do the bonding of the new elementary school at that time, which will place debt service into fiscal '08.
Yeah, and that's an issue that I think we need, we should...
Well, you and I have talked about the Rybeck meetings, and that's...
Okay, because that would be a goal, it would seem to me, if we could do this, and figure out a way to do that.
Another ban.
I know. But it may be cost-effective...
To do the ban.
To do it with a ban, avoid the principal payment, even though that may cost a little more to the town, but over the years, the 20-year period, there's going to be greater assessments in the town.
Okay.
Okay. Now, 16th is suggesting...
Tuesday.
16th is a...
The day after Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, the day after Martin Luther King Day is a budget time.
Planning Board has a meeting then.
You've met in the past up at the community center. We still are, we're looking for a date. I think you saw a copy of the letter we sent to the school department the first week. And I believe my target date to the budget committee is the 17th.
We need to have it, don't we, then? Probably should have it during the week of the eighth.
Council meetings are made on the 17th.
What about, yeah, what about the 10th? Wednesday, the 10th.
Sounds good to me.
Is that good to you, Mr. Costa?
It's okay with me.
Everybody can live with that?
Mm-hmm.
Let me just write it down. January 10th. I guess we'll call this a workshop on the budget.
Where will it be held? Will it be held in one of the schools?
Here.
I would prefer it would be held here. I think it's a much more functional facility for these type of discussions.
Okay. We'll hold it here, absent a notice from the town clerk or the administrator. Okay, thank you very much for the initial presentation.
Thank you, Glenn.
Certainly have some work to do.
We're also going to have for you very shortly, which you'll probably get in your mailboxes, some revenue projections, which I think will help facilitate the discussions, and where we're looking at, you know, what revenues we're looking at targeting.
You know, before we move to the next item, I think it might be helpful to introduce the miss doing this. I think you need to suggest the new town planner.
Excuse me.
And also, who can stand up and say hello to everybody?
Do you want to come up, why don't you come over for synergies yourself?
Chris Spencer. Looking very forward to working with everybody on the town council and administrator. I think there's a lot of challenges, but even more opportunities within the town, in terms of what needs to be done and where we're going to go.
Well, we're glad to have you here, and I think the planning board will also welcome your services, and we wish you well in working with them. They've had a great deal of experience in this town, and we want you to mesh gears with everybody.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I also think we've been remiss not to recognize Lieutenant Skagovinsky.
He's still there?
No.
Nope, he left.
He just left.
He waited for you, Louise, and you know, he just had to go.
After I was practicing at...
That's why he left.
It's Skagovinsky.
This ain't...
Skagovinsky.
And I'll tell you...
I'll get him at the next meeting.
I want to welcome the acting chief on board. He has been working very hard, trying to get out and to interact with all the various shifts coming in, so that he has an opportunity to at least talk to them or have a chance to meet with them, because obviously the shifts change. So sometimes he's in the office starting at noon, sometimes in the office starting at 6:00, depending on what shift he's trying to reach that night. So we welcome aboard.
Very good. Okay, and moving on to the next and the last item on our unfinished business is the continuation of a discussion with regard to the town finance official. So who would like to lead off on that?
Just so you know, Madam President, as Mr. Amorante is walking up in here, if you look at that section of the budget, we have budgeted monies for a part-time treasurer, which is the current treasurer salary, and a full-time finance officer, depending on what direction the council chooses to go, or if they go maintain both positions. But the monies were budgeted, they were, the position was partially budgeted last year and is fully budgeted in the budget this year, pending your approval, obviously, and the budget committee's approval.
Yes, James Amorante, Town Treasurer. Well, at the last meeting, I recall that we briefly continued a discussion from the workshop of December 4th. But the matter was continued at the last council meeting to tonight, for a couple of reasons, if I recall. Andy did say he needed more time, and you did want the new councilors to have some time to digest this. And I'm not sure if Andy is going to be here tonight and what time, whether or not his associate is going to talk about this or not. Again, in summary, we've talked about the various transition options in keeping with the mandate of the voters and their November 7th instructions, that the elected treasurer shall not be replaced with an appointed treasurer, and the vote at the financial town meeting in May to fund a full-time position. I still, in trying to keep within those instructions, I have prioritized my thoughts on implementation, and I continue to hold out hope for the part-time treasurer and full-time finance officer, who would be hired by the town administrator with the advice and consent of the council and report to the town administrator. I continue to support placing this person within the town administrative structure, and that's been what I have been trying to accomplish for the past couple of years. The second option or alternative is, again, my resignation, and to be replaced by an appointment until November 2008 of a full-time treasurer, at which time there would be an election of a treasurer to serve the remainder of my, the remaining two years of my term. The third option was the so-called part-time treasurer deputy treasurer option. And I have talked to a Providence attorney who's taken a quick look at it, talked to Andy about that. That may be the least desirable of the options for various reasons. The appointment of a deputy treasurer appears to be one that ends when the appointing treasurer, and again, this appointment is with the advice and consent of the council. But the deputy treasurer's term ends when the appointing treasurer ceases to be treasurer. And that makes a lot of sense, because the statute also goes on to say that the treasurer is liable for the misconduct and neglect and default of the deputy treasurer. So it wouldn't make sense for the appointing treasurer... So it wouldn't make sense for the appointing treasurer to resign, let the deputy treasurer stay on, and be responsible for his or her conduct or misconduct. So the third option of the ending, and there was a little colloquy the last meeting between myself and Brian about that, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with that. So maybe there's some other scenario that Andy is ready to present to you. I'm not sure if he's going to be here tonight, if you want to continue this till January, it's really up to the council. We do want to move forward, because there's, work's not getting done. We need that presence. Glenn and I, we're holding down the fort, but it takes away from other things we should be doing. I think, the last thing I would say, I think it's really a decision that the eight of us should make. We're elected, and we've received our instructions, or if you're in the military, our marching orders, and it's time for us, they want us to sort these things out. And I can only tell you my thoughts and try to see what we can do to move this along, but I think we do want to hear from Andy. Thank you.
I know Andy said that he would try to be here by 8:00. Is that what, yeah, that's his intention, to be here by 8:00? So we'll proceed with some discussion. It's not critical that, you know, he'd be here to get some reactions, and I think the way to do this is just sort of go around the table and see how, where people are subject to getting, because I don't want to recess this meeting until he gets here, might as well proceed.
I think we got some issues we really need to address here. If we have a full-time financial director and the part-time treasurer, I think we have to make it clear how the office is going to operate. Is the staff in the office reporting to the full-time finance director? Are they still reporting to the part-time treasurer? I mean, the only way that functions properly is when you get a handle on, from the top to bottom, you know, the direction, the workflow, and how it gets back to. If we're trying to prepare numbers and so forth, you know, for our budgets, and we need to know how expenditures are going, we don't need anything that's going to be tying that up, where the administrator has to go to the treasurer, the part-time treasurer, and make requests for information, who then is going to relay it. So I think the structure of that is a key component in how that's going to be handled.
I think that question is easily answered if we speak in favor of alternative number two. I think that when the participants at the financial town meeting voted to approve the financial, full-time financial officer, I think they were led to believe, and I could be wrong, but I think they were led to believe that that position would replace the town treasurer. And so I would say, if we went along with option number two and placed that question on the ballot again, asking them, and I don't know whether we can do that legally, we have to wait for a legal opinion, but if that could be done, it would say that's the solution of the problem. I hate to see an elected official position go, because it takes more of the power away from the voter. On the other hand, we're facing serious budgetary problems, and that would be a step in the right direction.
But we have to marry the two, we have to marry the two based on the vote that was taken, that when we went on the ballot with a ballot question that said, "Do we replace with the full-time?", the vote was no, we keep a treasurer. So we have to balance that, because you had some 3,000 people vote in a general election to give you advice, and you had 300 people who elected to do it a different way. Well, I sure as heck see the issue of what was voted in November as being a more positive response of what people want to see than the 300 people at a financial town meeting. So I think we have to balance that very delicately, so we're not saying to the voter, despite the fact that you said we should do this, we're going to do exactly what we wanted to do. I think we have to have that balance in place to say, recognizing this, recognizing, you know, what the powers and duties of the treasurer, the elected treasurer, who they wish to continue with, how it fits with adding an additional person in the office. And that's basically what we're doing. We're adding an additional person in that office, as, you know, but he's not going to be the guy the voter wants to see running the show.
Person's going to be in support as opposed to being the lead person.
Yes, and that's how, that balance is what I'm talking about.
I said that we'd go around the table, okay? So we're going to go around the table. Paul?
I think you're on the right track, Don, and I think what we need to do is, I think, you know, we've tossed this back and forth, and I think what we need to do is, we have to actually take the two positions and define the duties and just put them in the columns, and who's, and how it's going to be broken down, insured by charter, by state law, and who's going to fit into where, and that's how it's going to fall, and who's going to do what. And I think, and it has to be in black and white, where we as a council can see it, and I think that's what's going to satisfy everyone, and I think that's what's need, what's going to have to be done. We can go with proposals, back and forth, look at it, we can look at it and say, "You got this one here, that one there." I think once we put it in a column-wise and fully understand it, and we can say, "That's how it will be done," I think we can clearly understand it. I think everyone will have a better idea. Clearly, I agree with you, Don. You know, when we went to the town financial meeting, it made sense. The people there said, "Yes, this looks like a wonderful idea." You know, financially, it's the best thing for the town, but clearly, when it went before the citizens at the election, they said, "No." They wanted an elected treasurer to be there to oversee everything, and so we have to do that balance in that, and we need to break it down the way it should be. And I think once we do that and define what the duties are going to be between the treasurer and the financial officer, we'll be able to siphon it out.
You know, while I agree with Don's analysis, I find myself much more in agreement with Mr. Costa, that I honestly, I've looked at this and back and forth. I think the people in the town voted for, they supported the full-time treasurer. They wanted to keep it elected, or at least until they got a better explanation, and there is nothing here that would prevent us from moving to a full-time treasurer's position. And it consolidates the powers and the duties, and we don't get involved in the who does what, and that, I'm a little bit afraid, will get us into back and forth, and does this fall within your power or that power? Why not consolidate it in one position? So I find myself in Mr. Costa's camp. Brian?
It seems to me that the key here is to clearly define, this is a new type of position, a new relationship, and just to clearly define it. To me, it seems to be very similar to the situation where we have an elected council that technically is in charge of operating the town, but they hire, they appoint the administrator who does the day-to-day work. This relationship seems to me like it could work, where you have the elected part-time treasurer who sets policy, just as the council does, for the treasurer-type matters, financial matters, and then there's a hired person that's under the treasurer, now can work under the administrator, but is doing the work that typically a full-time treasurer might do, so that, again, you have somebody doing the day-to-day work. It just would be a matter of clearly defining as downsides who that that person is reporting to, who the staff in the office is reporting to. But I think under those circumstances, whether we hire a full-time person, whether we hire a consultant to do work on a short-term basis, if we set up that structure, I think that this can work with the part-time treasurer continuing as more of a supervisory, setting policy type of role.
I'd just agree with the theory. I think both could coexist perfectly. However, you know, checks and balances is, in fact, what I thought that the voters wanted to see. We keep the elected, you know, treasurer, however, we'll need to delineate those duties to make sure that everybody understands, you know, where the reporting lines fall. But it's certainly something that, you know, the analogy that Brian used, I think, was perfect, whereas, you know, it's an elected official, and having that administrator carry out the day-to-day duties, and having people answer to that person, and ultimately answering to the town administrator. But the full-time elected treasurer would, in fact, develop policies, oversee those policies, implement those policies, and have everyone within the office coexist and carry out those policies. So I think that's kind of where I am on that.
I think the voters made it very clear. I mean, I personally was looking for it to run on a way, but I think the voters voted resoundingly to keep the elected treasurer in the case, and they also, like, will allow us to put someone below him as a finance director.
I did, if you go back to my agenda request to appear before you at the December 4th workshop, and again, I thank you for squeezing me in, you'll notice in that packet that there were three attachments, and one was what I referred to as the duties that I feel as the elected town treasurer should keep, and these are the duties, these are these checks and balances that you refer to. The control of, it's up to about $80 million now, if we add, if we total the annual budget and total debt service, we're close to about $80 million. And that's, again, if you refer to the list of duties that I proposed that the treasurer must retain, you'll see that it addresses the ability to have the, to review and approve all bills, all expenditures of town money, and there's a second duty that I retained, and that, of course, is debt service. And there are maybe three or four other duties that are on that list of duties to be retained by the treasurer. The second list is the duties of the, you may not have that one, I gave it either to Andy or Glenn or both, and that is the list of the duties that I suggested the finance person would retain, would be responsible for. And without getting into a lot of detail, but with regards to Councilman Bowlen's point, I had envisioned, and again, if you kindly refer to the duties to be assigned to the finance officer, this person would manage the day-to-day operations of the, and I will call it the finance office, formerly known as the treasurer's office, with regards to that point.
Jim?
Yes.
I didn't get a copy of that package. Could I have a copy?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Let's see, let's see.
I don't need it immediately, Jim. I don't know if we're going to resolve this tonight, but...
Well, you're thinking about, the one thing I would like to just put on the discussion is, Brian, your analogy, this is a policymaking position, it isn't. The town treasurer doesn't set policy. If you look at the duties you have, it's managing money with a financial advisor. The bond issues are really driven by the underwriters and bond companies. We don't, we can direct and make suggestions about timing, et cetera, but it's, I think we're kidding ourselves if we say, "This is a policy." A part-time treasurer is not going to sit around making policy. It's not that kind of a role, it's not a council, where you do say, "Okay, this is the way we'd like to see it." I do think the two positions could create a lot of conflict, and I think the voters voted for full-time elected, and that's what I think we should do. Find the best possible appointed full-time treasurer to appoint to that position. And that's why I, I just wanted to say that. I just don't see it as a, compare it to the council and the administrator role.
Beyond, as I said, beyond the policy part of it, there's also the supervisory part, because then we're trying to put together two, as Don said, we've got two totally separate things we're trying to merge, and I have concerns of having a, putting ourselves in a situation where some of the issues that already exist could be exacerbated by having a full-time elected treasurer. It's not going to...
No, I'm saying, that's our, I'm arguing for that position now. That's not to prevent us, when the Charter Commission goes forward, to say, "Listen, we think it would work better with an appointed position." I leave that option open, but for the moment, I see more conflict than...
If we were to consider the full-time elected treasurer, I think one of the things we need to do is advertise that there's a position possibly available, and see what type of credentials and people are out there who have them credentials, who are residents of the town, who would work under the structure and fee that we'd be willing to pay before. I would like to see Mr. Amerenti say, "Well, that's the thing we're going to do, so I'm going to resign my position." If we don't have, or we don't find, the person who meets the criteria we would want to see for that, that we would be comfortable with that, then I think we have to look. I don't have a problem with exercising our options to go in either direction.
Secundarily.
Yes, exactly. Be looking, be looking at going one direction, because if we have that competent, qualified person who would take that appointment to the next, because we can only appoint to the next general election, you know, and if this person decided to stay, he could then run for that, you know, and continue...
If they're a resident, yes.
Well, that's right, that's what I'm saying. So it's important to find out if we do have that person available, because if we don't, then we really have to look at merging the part-time and the financial planner, and that's the only way to do it, is to take that track and go down, you know, that parallel track and see where we're at with both of them, you know, and maybe start some interview process to see which direction, you know, that track will split at, and which one we're going to take.
I absolutely agree with the approach. If we set out and look for a very qualified person that met our standards, if we did not find it, then we're forced into a option one.
And also, it does, it does two things, it does two things. I think it raises, it raises a level of confidence with the citizens of the town also, because now you can go to them, if you're re-proposing, you know, something through the charter review, is that in trying to accommodate, you know, their wishes that they voted in November, here's the stumbling blocks we came to. You know, here's what it's like if we went that other route. We're going to have the ammunition necessary, we're going to have the information necessary to put forward a convincing argument as to why it shouldn't continue with that manner. So I think we need to follow that parallel track, and I think if, in the interim, some issues arise, maybe we use a consultant, you know, to get us through those issues while we're following this out to see which direction we take. So I think we're not going to be without the ability to get whatever financial information decisions made, and I think that's probably, you know, our best way to proceed.
I think Andy may throw a damper on all of us, maybe not.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
So, Tites, you're on.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I'm at a weakness here from having not heard the beginning part of the discussion. I also am at a weakness here because this is a policy decision, and I know you turned it to me for a legal question, and as opposed to my usual answers of yes, yes and no, I'm afraid that, you know, most of my answers are no on this one. I mean, the charter at the moment is explicit about the dual office holding position, which I think would otherwise be a way around it. What I do think, though, is that, I think the council's ideas of, you know, going forward on a parallel track, you know, makes sense in the time being, and in the long run, you know, I think it might be possible to have a full-time elected treasurer with those qualifications set forth in the charter, that it shall be a full-time position, and that there are certain qualifications that the treasurer must maintain in order to maintain the qualification for office. And just like if, you know, any one of you move out of town, you would lose your office. If the treasurer doesn't maintain, certain things could be removed as well for violation of the charter. That's, you know, that's one way to do it. That's, you know, that's one way to do it, or the other way to do it, if you can get the voters' support. I noted in the charter, right away, your second item in the charter says that the form of government of the town shall be known as a council administrator form of government. And to me, implicit in that form is the idea that the administrator, you have an appointed administrator who runs the activities of day-to-day, including the financial stuff. So that really, you've got an incongruity in your charter that you have a council administrator form of government and yet still have an elected town treasurer. So, you know, I think it would be better to perhaps put it back to the voters with a better alternative. They were presented with the alternative saying, you know, shall the treasurer be eliminated? And whether they did or didn't realize what the alternatives were, I mean, all of us seem to know explicitly, well, we were there at the, we were there last year at the financial town meeting and they approved the finance, and we're going to that, and it was all laid out. Maybe the voters understood that and rejected it, maybe they didn't, maybe they didn't do the alternatives. And I think that's the proper thing for a charter review committee to, you know, to delve into and provide those alternatives to the voters. But I don't really have a legal answer for the moment, other than, I mean, you can go ahead with a financial director under the, under the supervision of the town administrator, hired through the procedures and so forth, the money is there, the financial town meeting has set that forth. But that person is going to have to work cooperatively with the treasurer. There's going to have to be a treasurer there and do it. And if they don't, obviously, it's going to be a nightmare. Or the alternative, if the treasurer does resign and you're looking for the treasurer to appoint, you know, to try to look for that interim treasurer to be everything that you want for that full-time position and live in the town. And that may be the answer to your problems.
So as I understand the comments from all the council members, the common thread might be to proceed on the parallel track and see what is out there for either a person that you could be happy with as a full-time treasurer, or a person that would be, you could be happy with as finance director. And sort of defer a final decision until we see the qualifications of where people, what people, what the ad might produce.
At the same time, you'd have to delineate the duties though.
Okay. What I'm saying is, I think at the same time, in order, in order that we proceed, and if Jim feels that the time constraint on the job, you know, in your part-time status is, I think we could get any information we need through consulting. I think that money is there from that planner, and all the time we're going down this track, you know, not using it, I think that if there are some needs, we address them in that manner. So that, I mean, I want to make Jim as comfortable as possible so that he stays on in the position he's in and not leaves us, you know, void because we're not moving in a direction that-
If I could follow up on Councilwoman Aruda's point, with regards to defining the duties, it's, I've thought it quite possible to, over the next, in an unhurried fashion, define the duties of both offices and present them to the electors at this, and I'm referring to Councilman Madeiras, at this special election to be held maybe in April, May, June.
Must have selected the charter commission.
Nevertheless, that would be a legitimate vehicle for a ballot question to codify the revised duties of the elected treasurer. And I think because the ballot question would not any way, shape, or form eliminate an elected treasurer, but simply codify the duties of, the revised duties of the elected treasurer, leaving the remaining duties to the finance official, that that, I would, I would strongly support that approach in that ballot question. And hopefully, the electors would agree that what we're trying to do is better define the duties of the finance officer and better preserve the instructions of the voter on November 7.
I would be much more comfortable putting that question to the charter review commission than putting that on the general election, let as many people as possible, rather than trying to put that-
Right. Yeah.
Well, I've been led to believe that it's illegal to set qualification requirements for an elected position.
Well, um-
Is that, is that true? I think that's what I just heard you say, you could set qualification requirements.
I'm not sure that it is illegal to set those requirements. And I'd obviously have to look at, I mean, we're exploring different ideas. But I think you can, I think you can set qualifications for people to maintain the office if it's something, I'm not sure you can necessarily set it for them to run for office, so someone can be able to, you know, they have to have it when they're in office and maintain it. And I think it would be, you know, it has to be an objective standard. It can't be something subjective. It's got to be, you know, if you want to say, a degree in business, finance, whatever, that's what it's got to be. It can't be something, you know, good financial understanding or whatever, it's got to be a real objective standard that nobody can disagree about. But I think you might be able to set that for the office.
I'm not sure that we can say no to somebody, you can't run for office.
No, you're right. Because they can, you definitely run, anybody can, they can run for office. And in fact, that's, you know, it's the same thing like in the president, you know, you have to be 35 years old to be president of the United States. You can run while you're 34, as long as you're 35 by the time you're sworn in. And the same thing, we can't stop someone from pulling the papers and running, but they can't serve in the office unless they meet the criteria.
Doc, I was, excuse me, I was referring to the duties and responsibilities. And as you know, in the 2004 Charter Review Commission, there were extensive duties for the town treasurer that were codified into the charter, probably anywhere from 15 to 20. So I'm just suggesting that a possibility is doing the same thing in 2006, maybe earlier. But the point about having the Charter Review Commission is well taken. But I was only referring to revising the current charter duties and responsibilities.
It would seem to me then that if we had someone run for that office who was not qualified, then the council would need to impeach him or-
Recall.
Petition, recall or some such thing. I see pitfalls there. We're not going to have a smooth-running financial operation.
Listen, I don't think, I don't think we're at that point, and I don't think we should complicate our issue any further than it's already complicated by trying to figure this out. I think we first see if there's someone who meets the criteria through advertising or whatever else we've got to do. And we find somebody who can meet the criteria that this council's comfortable with, then, as Mr. Amorantis has said, he wouldn't have a problem with resigning and allowing the council to appoint that person and as someone who we're comfortable could, you know, if doing the job, be elected. Yeah. And if we don't find, and we don't find somebody wants to dedicate themselves to public service for, you know, the amount of money you want to pay for what you expect them to do, then we have to look at it from that other track of the financial officer, which now takes us to where it doesn't require a residency, and it opens up the pool of candidates. And I think that's why really, you know, rather than look at what qualifications we're going to require to be elected, I don't want to get into that, Doc. I agree with you. I don't want to get into saying, you know-
We're going to need to look at both sides.
Yeah, you've got to have a degree to be elected because I think that's a slippery slope we're going down if you do that. Because I think you're going to see that same issue being placed on most of the elected positions, and I think it's going to create total havoc everywhere. So I would like to see us avoid that and try to get this thing accomplished by advertising for standards for a financial director, advertising for standards for a treasurer, you know, get a parallel set of resumes coming in, take a look at what we got, where's the qualifications, what's best going to suit us, and then we make a decision based on that. And in the interim, Jim continues, and we provide him with whatever support he needs to continue on a part-time basis to get that work done.
Can I just make one suggestion?
By all means.
I think it's going to, maybe I'm wrong, but I think it's going to be difficult to advertise. Would anybody be acceptable for advertising a strong set of qualifications that we could use to see if anybody is out there for, at the elected full-time position?
Yeah.
If we find none, then do a very broad-scale advertisement for quote-unquote, "the finance director" option.
With the same qualifications.
Probably the same qualifications.
And that's basically what we're doing. We're either going to do it simultaneously, or we're going to do them one and then the other.
Yeah, I said sequentially, so see what's out there.
Yeah.
So first step would be to prepare such-
If, with regards to Councilman Edwards, and if you do advertise for the finance director, then you have to, by that point, have defined those duties. And you really can't define them, keeping in mind that you've got this elected treasurer, without, without setting these, these duties in stone, in concrete. And how do you do that? You do that, I guess, what's the first step? A charter amendment? If the electors aren't going to approve a charter amendment, redistributing these duties-
Well, I think, as I understand the proposal, is that we would first prepare an advertisement listing some qualifications and see if there's anybody out in this town who would like to serve this job with these qualifications. If we find none, nobody, we're not interested, we then take the next step, which is to go out broadly, same qualifications, as Mr. Edwards said, and to see what the world has. And if we do that, then we would be taking the finance director route.
And we're back to that, we're back to that. If we, if we go with a finance director, it still has to be that cooperative effort with the treasurer. And that's the key here because the power isn't duty spelled out within the charter. You know, it can be performed, you know, in another manner, but the duty belongs to, and that's where a cooperative spirit comes into play. And I think it can be done on that cooperative basis, rather than have to have, you know, a catification of the qualifications and so forth, the duties in the charter changed immediately. I think it's done as the cooperative. And I think it, again, it puts us on the track to be able to do a better job than explaining why we need this position to go in that direction. And especially if we show that, you know, we went out and tried to find someone who could be elected and met all these qualifications, but it wasn't happening, you know, from within the town. I'm not saying they're not there. I want to see if anybody wants to do it. And, you know, I would love to give them the opportunity first, as you've indicated, you would be willing to resign, you know, if we found that person. But you're also willing to stay on and cooperate with a finance director, if that's the direction it has to go, you know, based on finding a truly qualified individual to do the job.
I don't know if I want to stay on with a finance director within the treasurer's office. I would be inclined to with a finance director that reports to the town administrator.
No, no, no. I think those things, that policy, we can iron out. I mean, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying, if it's a treasurer, obviously, it's a treasurer and he runs that office and, you know, reports to the administrator. But yeah, I mean, I think you're not going to get disagreement from many members up here that a finance director literally should be under the direction of the town administrator in conjunction with, and it has to be in conjunction with the treasurer because of the powers and duties under the law.
Do you think we can talk this thing to death yet?
I'm going to, I'm going to, over the next week or two or three, sit down and talk to Glenn with the council's concurrence and then, and certainly try to work something out that's consistent with Councilman Bowlen's.
Okay, and just to recapitulate, where I think we are, okay, is that our focus should be on developing an ad soliciting invitations for people with qualifications within the town to serve as a full-time treasurer within the town. That's step one. And follow that process to the end. No, follow that process until, you know, we would go out just as we do on any qualifications. If we find that nobody has met those qualifications, step two would be to seek same qualifications, but we advertise through the world. You know, they could come from New York State for all we know. But we follow that process, and in that second, assuming we did not find a qualified candidate in the residence-
Those all come to the council.
Then we would take the second step and develop a memorandum of understanding about that person that would serve as a finance director and the relationship to the administrator and the treasurer.
All of those would go-
Interesting point here. If we're looking for a person to appoint, all of those qualifications, those first ones would have to come to the council.
Go to the clerk, and the clerk-
But if it becomes the finance, if it becomes the finance director, does that then have to go before the personnel board and back to us? Or would it come here first, or do we have to go the other route and ignore it and send it there first and then take what they send? I just, I don't want to get us into a charter issue about a hiring practice. If it's an appointment, it's ours.
If it's appointment of the treasurer-
But otherwise, it's-
Personnel board.
Yeah, an employee of the town.
So then it would go there. But, so we would not get those to do that comparison automatically after, I want step by any close, I want to make sure we do the process right.
Yep.
That's why it's being brought up.
To, to give the council a feel for timetable.
Okay.
Perhaps after discussions with Glenn over the next few weeks, I should, I should give the council a proposed resignation effective date subject to step one. And if step one happens, great. If step one doesn't happen, then the resignation, the condition-
I would like to ask you to withhold any letter of resignation with any date.
Yeah. Why don't hold that and let the process work?
Sure.
And then you're free, free country, you can do as you wish. I think the focus should be on developing an ad that would list the qualifications-
Just if I give you a date certain, it'll, it will provide the impetus to move you-
No, no, no. Jim, I don't think you're going to see this thing stalling. I think that everybody here wants to see this coming to the same kind of, you know, resolution that you want to see. We need to get this thing straightened out so that we can move forward with, you know, the financial direction the town has to go in. I mean, we cannot continue, you know, to have the town administrator be the focus on that along with all the other duties. I'd like to see the administrator stay a while, you know, I don't want to create so much work for him.
Well, I, okay then. I will, I support Councilman Bowlen's proposal, his suggestion on how to proceed.
Okay, so by the second meeting in January, we will have before us a proposed ad that we can all take shots at.
Okay.
And that is step one.
Sounds good.
Will that have contained all the charter duties?
Yes, oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Yes.
Just for clarification, should it include just the charter regulations or some of the qualifications that were listed with the financial town officer?
That's what, that's what we wanted to, we wanted to include the financial officer qualifications is what we're talking about. We're trying to find a treasurer who meets the standards we're looking for for a financial officer. That's what, that's my understanding. So it should go, yeah, it does go beyond, right. It goes beyond just the treasurer and the charter.
Can I also make a suggestion? I don't think it's going to take Mr. Amorantis and I that much time, I would think, drafting an act. We might be able to have the act by the third-
Fine.
Put it on the agenda and bring it to us when it's ready.
Yeah, continue it. Continue this.
But mostly- A motion to continue this matter to the January 8th meeting.
Expecting that, as part of that motion, that we will see an ad.
Expecting verbiage for an ad.
Motion's made, seconded, any further discussion? And if you do, we'll put your hand up. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Bring it forward, continue, thank the announcements.
Announcements?
Very briefly, Town Hall will close at 11:45 on Friday to allow our employees to celebrate the Christmas holiday, we will be closed all day on Christmas Day, obviously. We'll also be closed on New Year's Day, trash collection, if Mr. Lester wants to come up and talk directly about trash collection, I would like him to do that also, because obviously, we have a couple holidays. I know his office itself will be closing on Friday at 11:00, but obviously, we have people on call, and I know the library is shutting down for part of the day on Saturday. We're putting together a joint announcement to all the media so that they're notified, and obviously, when you came into Town Hall tonight, you already saw it posted, but since trash is always a big issue, especially when people have all those Christmas gifts to unwrap and trash to get rid of. Mr. Lester?
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
As with all the holiday weeks, the week of December 25th and the week of January 1st, the trash collection will be delayed by one day due to the holidays in those weeks. Also, for those planning ahead, the week of January 15th, there's another holiday coming up, it will be delayed by one day that week as well.
It's the old rule, isn't it? It's the old rule, there's a holiday in the week, so...
Yeah, it's the same rule we've been operating under for.
What about Christmas tree pickups?
Christmas tree pickup will be the week of January 8th, and we'll run the 8th through the 12th, assuming that we have weather that the DPW crew can operate in, and residents need to have their trees out at the curbside, the DPW crew will come by and pick those up, chip them up, we'll be bringing the chips down to the entrance to the landfill for those who would like to have them.
Unbagged trees.
That's correct.
No metal.
No ornaments, no, you know, it should be free of ornaments and free of the plastic bags, please, we can't put those through the chipper.
We like...
We'd like to tinsel off as well, thank you.
We'd like to remind everybody about the trash pickup, because we do have new residents in town, and people frankly forget that it's a holiday coming up and what the trash pickup, so this hopefully will resolve some of the comments. On behalf of the town staff, I wish you all and all the citizens a very happy and safe holiday, and we look forward to getting together with you again in January.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of the council, we wish the staff, the department heads, the administrator, all departments, town clerk's office, everybody a happy holiday. But of course, unless the town solicitor has a comment, we need to go into executive session.
Actually, I do with regard to executive session. First, the good news, we'll leave litigation on just in case there's any questions, although really, in the week's time, there's nothing new to report. Nobody new has sued us in the past week. But I would like, there are, however, two items, not for decision, but just for discussion, so I can inform you, I'd like you to add to the executive session an item under 42-46-5A6 related to or concerning prospective business, no, I'm sorry, five, wrong one, related to acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes, or disposition of public-held property, where an advance public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public, so it's sub-five, and if you could just add that to the agenda, it's just two brief things I want to let you know about.
Motion to add item to the executive session agenda under 42-46-5A5, public property.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
And a motion to remain in executive, or enter into executive session, 42-46-5A2, litigation.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Remain in executive session under 42-46-5A1, discussion of the town solicitor's contract.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
And to further remain under 42-46-5A1, the discussion of process for the town administrator's evaluation.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
And further remain for 42-46-5A5, public property.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, we are in executive session.
For the record, the town administrator has no objection to his discussion of his...